Welcome everyone to our regular monthly meeting of Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general town business of township. Today's date is February 12th, 2025. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building is also being offered in a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting will provided as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, if you could please summarize any public comment received prior to tonight's meeting?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had three public comments that were received prior to 4:30 this afternoon. All three were generally in opposition to scheduling a public hearing for the property at 11:03 Willow Grove Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, I would please ask you to stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection to honor the servicemen and women who placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Legits.
I am looking to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
This time I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minutebook of the township.
On that dip motion.
The motion, is there a second? Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Commissioner Ratzavong is not with us this morning, however, we have. Isn't it seven in the morning?
Morning somewhere.
Commissioner Ratzavong is not with us this evening. Otherwise, we have a full complement of commissioners and staff. And let's see. I would like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its February 10th, 2025 workshop meeting to discuss two litigation matters. And now we would like to move on to a couple special moments. I would please like to invite John Corley, the Public Works employee who is recently retired. Commissioner McNamara, I would ask you to join him to read into record Resolution 1659, a resolution honoring John for 35 years' service to the Springfield Township community.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I'm gonna hold it. Okay, whereas John E. Corley, a 29-year resident of Windmore, Pennsylvania, attended St. Genevieve School and Springfield Township High School. And whereas on June 26, 1989, John joined the Springfield Township Public Works Department as a seasonal employee. Whereas on September 21st, 1989, John was hired as a full-time employee, assigned to the Highway Division, prepared to serve the residents of Springfield Township while upholding the values and goals of the Public Works Department. And whereas on June, in June 1992, when the township required a knowledgeable, talented, and trustworthy employee to operate a refuse collection truck, John eagerly accepted the assignment. And whereas no matter the weather conditions, John always led by example, striving to be an exceptional coworker, protecting the safety and well-being of his crew, and never missed an opportunity to make his coworkers laugh. Whereas whether John was driving a refuse collection truck, operating a winter maintenance vehicle, or walking the halls of the Public Works Garage, he is always respected and appreciated by his coworkers and supervisors. And whereas during emergency weather events, John was required to be absent from his wife Stephanie and daughters Joanna, Jennifer, and Jamie on many nights, weekends, and holidays in order to serve the Springfield Township community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize, commend, and wholeheartedly thank you, John E. Corley, for 35 years of dedicated service to the Springfield Township community, and also extends best wishes to you and your family for your retirement. This is unanimously adopted this 12th day of February 2025. Thank you for your service.
Your service. Okay, I'll come up. I'll just.
So before you, before you go, we do have a motion that we need to vote on.
That's right.
And then maybe if you want to take any pictures with your family like that. So we do have a motion.
There is a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Thank you, John.
Yeah, can we do a family when I come up and do a picture?
Show me today.
All right. Why don't you guys move over so that's not in the.
Yeah.
Very nice. Congratulations. Thank you.
John, maybe if after our next one, maybe we can do a picture with the commissioners if that would be okay with you guys? Thank you. And now I also have the pleasure of inviting John McClintock to the front of the room, also a retired Public Works employee. Commissioner McNamara will also read that resolution honoring John for 29 years' service as well to the Springfield Township community.
Come over here, take pictures. There we go. Okay. Oh, wait, they're right here. I was gonna say, I can't even see the page. All right. A resolution honoring John, John McClintock for his 29 years of service to Springfield Township Montgomery County. John McClintock is a 28-year resident of Orland, Pennsylvania. Whereas on September 11th, 1995, John joined the Springfield Township Public Works Department as a laborer assigned to the paper collection truck. Whereas on May 5th, 2003, an opening with the Highway Division of the Public Works Department became available, and John embraced his role with pride, knowledge, and dedication. Whereas no matter what task was assigned to John, he endeavored to complete the job with high quality, priding himself on his magic hands, and offering his knowledge to those working alongside of him. Whereas John was exceptionally skilled in masonry construction and restoration, and used his talents to instill a lasting impact on our community. Whereas whether John was assisting with roadway maintenance projects, ensuring the stormwater conveyance systems were operating effectively, or assisting with park maintenance activities, he did so fully without hesitation and without recognition. And whereas during emergency weather events, John was required to be absent from his wife Anne Marie and sons James, Jacob, and John on many nights, weekends, and holidays in order to serve us, the Springfield Township community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize, commend, and wholeheartedly thank John McClintock for 29 years of dedicated service to Springfield Township community, and also extends best wishes to John and his family for your retirement. Unanimously adopted this 12th day of February 2025. There is a motion.
I'm here to the line of thanks. Thank you.
Okay, we'll do our motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Great. All right. If you want to take any pictures and if you'd love to be able to take a picture with commissioners too.
Or if you want to stand in front of the commissioner.
Let's go down. We'll go down.
Okay. We'll go down. You guys speak your vote.
Yeah, good.
All right, both John.
comment portion of the meeting, and then we'll get into our agenda and our motions for this evening. But this time, I would like to introduce the team from MKSD Architects, who have been working diligently on our Rec Center project on Willow Grove Avenue. So I'd like to introduce Sylvia Hoffman, Isabella Parker, Ryan Kennedy, and Jack Rogers from MKSD. And they're going to present tonight talking about data collection, community feedback, and needs assessments summary for that Rec Center master plan project. So take it away.
First, I'd like to extend a thank you to all the residents of Springfield Township, the Recreation Advisory Committee, and everyone else that's worked with us. They've done a tremendous job representing your community over the last seven months. They're very enthusiastic, they're very committed, and they've been extremely helpful in our study over the last seven months. So we're excited to present to you what we found. Since the introductions have already been completed of my team, I'm Sylvia Hoffman. And with me I have Ryan, Jack, and Isabella. And also, we have Ballard King and Associates. I'll let Ken introduce himself, and then I'm going to have Isabella and Jack take over the presentation tonight.
Good evening. I'm Ken Ballard, president and founder of Ballard, King, and Associates with the recreation planning firm on the, on the project team.
While we're kind of getting some of the slides here going, the goal of this presentation is to talk about the Phase One, which involves the summary and data collected from the community. And it also involves the report on the found site, including building deficiencies. And then we're also providing a cost estimate for the related renovation for the existing site. And then we're going to summarize the data that was collected for the needs on the Recreation Center, and then give the next steps for the feasibility study. So the agenda for tonight is we're going to give an overview of the existing Recreation Center, talk about the feasibility study timeline, the market analysis, and then we'll go into the summary needs assessment and the data that was collected. Then we're going to talk about some of the site facility deficiencies, and then the recommendation of the improvements, cost estimate overview, summary of the findings from Phase One, and then the next steps of the feasibility study.
Thank you. So I'd like to touch on the background of the site. So the existing site is on East Willow Grove Avenue, and this property was purchased in 2015 by the township to ultimately serve as an indoor gymnasium and recreation center for the township. While this facility was being built and the library next door, it was used as the interim municipal building and library. So on the south bottom part of the page, that's where East Willow Grove is for anybody that's not familiar with the site itself. And Laurel Beach Park is to the upper right-hand corner. So like I mentioned, the location is 1200 East Willow Grove Avenue. Laurel Beach Park is an adjoining property. It's a separate property. It's about six acres. The lot, the existing Recreation Center is at about 1.6 acres. And today it contains the gymnasium, the former church, or community hall, and also the rectory. And the next slide will show what the usage is by the Recreation Department today. I won't read all of these, but some of them encompass the martial arts program, yoga, ceramic workshops, pottery, drawing, and then multiple camps, superhero, cheerleading, flag football, and that sort of activities. So this is a project timeline of where we started and where we're at today and where we're going. We, our contract was signed in March of 2024, and we began with stakeholder meetings in The blue purplish colors are up there are public meetings that we've attended and information gathering sessions. The yellow is the Community Day that we set up a tent for, and we gathered a lot of information on that day. We also, in the green, are the Recreation Center Advisor Committee meetings, which occur on the first Thursday of every month. And the red highlighted box is where we are today. This is the presentation of Phase One of three phases. Phase One is the information gathering session. And then moving forward, in the near future, we'll be presenting the Phases Two and Phases Three of the project, which are more of the schematic design of the, the new community center if you decide to do that.
One of the first steps in the process of this study was to understand the market that exists, not only for the existing community center amenities, but also for potential new facility. So we looked at the demographics of not only the township, but the immediate surrounding area, which is what we call the secondary service area. We also looked into understanding what other options people have available for indoor recreation and sports activities in that market itself. So what I'm going to go over is just a real brief summary of our findings and how that impacts the market for a potential larger facility. One of the things, it'll be difficult to draw very many non-residents to this facility due to the fact that there's really a prevalence of other public facilities in your area, certainly a number of private, and certainly also several YMCA's and other nonprofits in the area. So they kind of saturate some of the market around you. So the market's going to have to depend primarily on township use. And you'll find later that's, we don't think that's a big problem. So the demographic characteristics of the service area, and again, can be a challenge, if you will, is that you have an older median household income, excuse me, eating older median age, and there will be a continued growth in the older age groups through the coming years. And that's not unusual for most communities in the United States right now that aren't having great amounts of growth. They're aging communities. And generally, the rate of participation in recreation activities is lower as you get older, although it does shift a little bit to different types of activities as well. So it's important that whatever you move forward with on this type of project, that you scale it to the township's market, and also, you know, be sure that you're cognizant of the need to have a strong financial performance to limit the obligation of the township to, and minimize its commitment to the operational aspect as well. So certainly, the funding aspect is one of the critical aspects of determining the viability of this project, and that's both from the capital side as well as the operational aspect. So those are the challenges. So let's talk a bit now on the next slide on some of the opportunities. As it relates to a market, we have the benefit, and you have the benefit, of the fact that you've been kind of operating a recreation center in the existing facilities that we're going to be talking about tonight. So you've established at least a foundational market for indoor recreation, but the issue is that it's in an inadequate facility. But it does give you an existing market. If you do something new, you won't be starting from scratch. You already have existing users. The township's population, nearly 21,000, is large enough by itself to support a small to moderate-sized recreation center. And you'll find that's probably ultimately what we're talking about anyway. And, you know, that'll be augmented by the ability to draw some users, as we talked about, not a great deal of them, from that secondary service market as well. On the demographic aspect, you have a high percentage of households with children in the township, much higher than the state and national numbers. And, and so that helps as well. They're primary users of recreation activities and in recreation centers. And also, the township has a really high median household income level, and we call a high recreation spending index. And that means that people in the township expend more dollars for recreational purposes, much higher percentage than the, than the general public throughout the United States. So that'll also help with drawing, you know, your residents to the facility, and increases the rate of use for, for these types of facilities. So that's kind of the market summary, if you will.
So part of our information gathering process, we had the opportunity, like Ryan was saying, to attend public meetings, and then we also had the opportunity to attend Community Day, which this was a really fun day for us. We had a great opportunity to engage with the community and really talk to them about the existing recreation facility, and then also what they would like to see for a recreation center. So we did everything from face painting to having kids draw their ideal recreation center. So it was a really kind of fun engagement, engagement with them and the community, and try and talk to them about what they would like to see. And then we also had the opportunity to hand out a survey with a QR code, and then also physical surveys. And the surveys were really kind of tailored towards the community and the township and what their recreational needs or wants are. So these are the survey results, and we had the survey go on for about two months. So this was kind of the gathered data collected from all of the surveys. So the first question was, are you a resident? And we had 97.7% say yes. And then the next question was, do you participate in any activities? And so we had a high percentage say a few times a year. And then we had the next question, does anybody in your household use the existing recreation facility? And 70% said no. We asked if yes, who uses the facility? And 23.1% said children, and then the rest were not acceptable. And then if yes, is the facility meeting your needs? And majority were not able to answer that, but we did have 31.4% say that it could be improved. And then we did ask, if you use a recreation facility, where do you typically go? And the high percentage was the Montgomeryville Township Community Rec Center. We asked, will you be willing to pay to use the facility? And 67.5% said yes. We asked if it should be a membership or per-use fee, and the results were just about split. We asked if the Recreation Center had amenities you needed, how often would you go? And 62.4% said weekly.
So moving on to the facility and site conditions assessment portion, MKSD and our engineering team, we visited the site, we walked through all the buildings, and we also looked at the overall site. So looking at the physical condition of each building, but not only physical, we also looked at the, the program deficiencies, and also inoperability perspective as well. So we looked at the site, Building A, which is a gymnasium, Building B, the former church and community hall, and also the rectory that also is on the site. So looking at the facility site constraints and deficiencies, we have them in the three groups here, the site, Building A, and Building B. Starting with the site, we, I'm not going to read these all point for point, but I'll just make a few highlights for each group. Big one on the site is there's limited space and limited parking, which could pose some limitations for any future intended program, program use. The pedestrian and vehicular circulation is less than optimal, though there may have not been any issues now. If there's an increased use of the site, could see some potential issues in the future. There's also some poor drainage along the southwest of the site, which could also lead to issues down the road. For Building A and Building B, there were some similar deficiencies between both of them, such as damaged exterior masonry, some inefficient and outdated windows, and also some roofing materials that are past or at the end of their useful life. But there were some that stuck out for each building. Starting with Building A, we had the gymnasium floor has several cracks telegraphing through, which can, you know, is not optimal for the activity that is performed within the gymnasium. The HVAC actually is not currently functional within the gymnasium, so we would look to repair that. And the court is undersized for its intended use. So there's limited space on the sidelines for spectators, and there's limited space for cross-court play to break it up into two basketball courts. As for Building B, some areas of moisture and water infiltration were observed throughout the space, on the structure and on the interior surfaces. The HVAC and conditioning issues, there are some of those that were taking place in the building. This might have something to do with the outdated and inefficient windows. And also, the existing size, the scale, the height of the space, isn't exactly conducive to some of the programs that are offered for this building. As for the rectory, this building was really constructed as a residential structure, so it's not exactly serving the, the purpose of, of the site and the program and activities that take place. The last note here, current buildings, if they're chosen to remain, they do pose limitations. So we kind of find those as, as not quantifiable, so such as, you know, any future activity use in the building, limitations on the court sizes, as I mentioned before, for spectators, for cross-court play, the heights and the constraints with each space, and also any additional program and storage that would be needed along with those additional programs. Just to reiterate, these are two separate buildings, so the operability needs to be taken into consideration, whether that's between staffing or security between the two buildings. They are separate, so depending on how the township intends to use them in the future, just something to take into consideration. So with the deficiencies, we recommend some repairs. Just to note that these repairs are more or less in the physical nature of the building. So some of the highlights here, without reading each note for note, we look to replace the existing pavement on the site, regrade, and ensure that proper drainage along the southwest corner. We would want to repair the, the windows as they are outdated, inefficient, past their useful, useful life, and definitely replace the air conditioning and HVAC units in both buildings to make sure that it's comfortable for residents that would use the buildings. And also some capital improvements, such as adding sprinklers, which may be required, be required by code for any future intended use. The demolition of the rectory building, this will offer up more space for the, for the site, which could be used potentially for, for additional parking. So getting into the cost estimate overview, so based on the conditions that we observed and investigated, along with the recommendations that we outlined, the overall cost estimate estimation is, includes, but is not limited to the deferred maintenance of the building repairs and the replacement of various building elements that I mentioned earlier, capital improvements, this could be the sprinklers, and added wall pads for the gymnasium, and also renovation contingency, so any alterations to the building, and then any building code requirements that may come up during design. So some of the highlights here, without reading each note for note, we look to replace the existing pavement on the site, regrade, and ensure that proper drainage along the southwest corner. We would want to repair the the windows as they are outdated, inefficient, past their useful life, and definitely replace the air conditioning and HVAC units in both buildings to make sure that it's comfortable for residents that would use the buildings. And also some capital improvements, such as adding sprinklers, which may be required, be required by code for any future intended use. The demolition of the rectory building, this will offer up more space for the for the site, which could be used potentially for additional parking. So getting into the cost estimate overview. So based on the conditions that we observed and investigated along with the recommendations that we outlined, the overall cost estimate estimation is includes, but is not limited to the deferred maintenance, so the building repairs and the replacement of various building elements that I mentioned earlier. Capital improvements, this could be the sprinklers and added wall pads for the gymnasium, and also renovation contingency, so any alterations to the building and any building code requirements that may come up during design. So broken out on the right side, we have the soft costs, which include design fees, any vendor costs, and also that kind of renovation contingency right now. Site work, Building A, Building B, and the opinion of cost. So the soft cost is about 1.6 million, the site work around 555,000, Building A, 2.3, Building B, just under 1.1, and the opinion of cost as a total is 5.6 million dollars. Just to summarize the costs that we outlined here, this is really only taking into consideration the physical nature of the building, actually, buildings. It's hard to put a number to really the intangible. So any future program that the township would want to add, these buildings are predetermined, they're existing, they have a defined shape, defined space. So it's really hard to predict kind of what the use and how they're going to operate, and just making sure that that they do operate how the township intends. Correct. Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions before we just give you our summary?
Yeah, the survey that you conducted. How many, how many members of the public participated? And curious how that relates to other, other surveys that you see in the marketplace that rate looks like?
That's a great question. I think we had, if I remember correctly from when we last checked it, it was like over 2,200 surveys. But I know at one point it was sent out to the schools so that everybody could participate in it. And I think, just in our opinion, this was a really engaging survey. At every public meeting we went out, we got several surveys filled out. I know people were telling us, I filled it out many times. So I think just from our opinion, it was very engaging, and it was great to see the community really take action and want to give their opinion on those questions related to the Rec Center. And I think we were kind of astounded with the amount of surveys that we got too, and how it was being sent out to the community, you know, even outside of the public meetings.
It was really outstanding. I've done a lot of these types of projects and surveys like this, and very impressed to see how many people wanted to give their opinion and their thoughts. So we really appreciated that. Any other questions?
One other.
Yes.
You mentioned the one survey question where other people went for community centers in Montgomeryville was a, was a big answer.
Yes.
Yes.
Sort of apples to apples for township-type facilities? Or did that include options, say LA Fitness or?
Yes, there are. If you can maybe speak to some of the other options that were on the list.
So we had listed the Greater Plymouth Community Center, Conshohocken Community Center, Montgomeryville, Ambler Area YMCA, the Philadelphia Salvation Army Community Center, LA Fitness, Planet Fitness, and then Anytime Fitness. And then we did even have another category. So we did try to tailor it towards this area. But, you know, listing the other areas that we know people can go to to engage in physical fitness.
Yes.
Yeah. Could you give us just a general idea of the square footage you're talking about in these buildings and Building A and Building B?
Yeah, I can't remember them exactly. I think one of them is 8,000 because it fits the size of a basketball court, which is roughly the size of a basketball court. But then there's also maybe 1,500, where there's the kitchen and some other auxiliary spaces. And then the former church facility, I'd have to, I'd have to look. I don't remember off the top of my head what the exact square footages are.
Renovation costs or the refurbishment costs for A and B, this is pretty much a gut, gut read.
Yes.
Right? You're taking, you're taking everything out, putting everything.
We are. Everything in there has passed its useful life. The toilet rooms are not ADA accessible, the buildings are not ADA accessible, the building systems. The only thing that really, to me, goes without fail is the structure of the building. Structure itself is fine, but you'd really have to take the masonry walls, repair all of those. The windows are not effective at this point anymore. So that's as close as you're going to get to almost a new building without tearing it down. You got them? Okay.
Building A is around 8,000, and Building B is around 9,000.
Building B is?
9,000, 9,000.
Okay. So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so I'll just summarize, I think where the design team stands at this point, based on the analysis of the architectural team, Ken Ballard, the engineers that we've worked with, the site engineers who analyze the site, and also the construction cost estimator. What we recommend is that you allow us to proceed with analysis and public input to investigate a new recreation center. And we believe that that would create a flexible use of space for various activities. It would provide additional program use for all age groups in the community, and support and promote the growth of the community while making a positive on Springfield Township. So our next steps would be to proceed further with the study of a new recreation facility on the existing site. And then that will be presented to all of you, the commissioners, as part of the Phase Two of the feasibility study.
Would you be open to, if there's any questions from the public?
Absolutely, sure.
Okay, great. So if anyone is here from the public who'd like to ask the architects a question, please feel free to do so. To get on the recording, it does need to come to the mic. You can just start with your name and address.
My name is Marie Kiesling. I live at 507 Lorain Avenue. And you're talking about taking down one of the buildings.
Actually, all three of them.
Taking them all down?
Yeah. The rectory is of no use.
Yes.
So that one will go no matter what.
That makes sense.
And then we have the gymnasium facility and the most accessible facility, so.
All right. So how much parking would you expect to gain from taking down the rectory?
I think just taking down the rectory, it was about 15, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's good. Okay.
So taking down the rectory, maybe 15 spaces? It's not a huge footprint that the rectory takes up, so it's not, it's not tremendous.
Yeah. The, the two buildings, are you just going to leave them as two buildings? Or is that going to be combined and used as as one facility?
So the challenge with keeping them, or the challenge with joining them, is that it makes the site access almost impossible. Because right now, there are just very narrow driveways connecting them. So if we infilled the space between the two buildings, you would end up with a dead end at the back of the property. There'd be no way to turn traffic to go back on.
Connected to that green space behind it?
The road is not connected.
Can you jump in just for a little bit clarity?
Yes, of course.
Just to understand, you know, what, what brought us to this point and what the purpose of this presentation was.
Obviously, I'm late to the game.
We had asked the architects to evaluate what it would look like if we were to keep those existing buildings and, and not have to build new. We do know that there's a massive investment in that for various reasons they pointed out. So it's not up to the architects, whether they turned out, it's really up to us, township. But they were asked to give us the information, what does it look like if we had to keep them? What does it look like? And the next phase is, okay.
And your plan is to make it a, a, something that the community has to pay for to use, as we do now.
Correct. So, so really, there's, there's, there's three sort of main outcomes from the decision about this site. The one is to not use it at all. You know, that's, that's obviously the lowest cost we could sell that property and just not have a recreation center, you know, for the community. And I'm sure there's some people that would be okay with that, you know, that's, that's obviously the cheapest. The second would be to bring those buildings up to their useful life. We are already spending a lot of money.
Just to keep them.
With Band-Aids and.
The amount of use that it gets used now, I mean, there was a list of things that are offered there, yoga and, I don't know, sports or activities indoor. There's no outdoor activities?
Not on this particular site, and the Laurel Beach Park is a separate, totally separate.
So that's, you're not even really talking about that.
Correct. There's some symbiosis, obviously, next to each other. But that's a totally, a separate property with two animals for its use. But we, these buildings do get a lot of use. There's a lot of programming in there. Unfortunately, sometimes we have to cancel programming because the heat.
I think the programs are really pretty expensive for the public use. The costs that each of these sign up for this are, from what I've seen, much more expensive than other townships. Maybe I'm wrong, but when I've compared prices to being a part of those activities, I know I'm old, but.
Well, that's, that's a little beyond the scope of, in terms of the.
But what you want to do with it is still make it nicer and better and more useful, but charge rather astronomical prices for the public use. If, if you could find a way to do this and make it useful for the public financially, even as a activity, programs that you have for the, for the, for the kids, it just seems like there's going to be a huge amount of taxpayer money for this. And then, once they've paid for all this extra, the, the public is going to say, we're paying so many taxes, and to use these facilities as well, you're going to charge us more. As a taxpayer, I don't see that as a, a good move. That's just.
It's an important comment. Thank you. And just to, to end on, on, you know, the third option is obviously building a new facility that would be, from a price standpoint, the most expensive, but it would also end with something that is a community asset. And your point about cost is absolutely important, and that's something we have to take consideration. I do promise you that the existing setup is not profitable for the township. It's a, it's a money loser in terms of upkeep and what we do charge for the programs.
Hello, Jim Sarsfield, 1019 Pleasant Avenue. I'm not here for or against it. I didn't even know it was coming up. But in the past, I know we spent millions of dollars on that church already. And I think it's ADA compliant, all the new bathrooms and certain things. I can see the other two buildings totally outdated. I don't know how they can compromise and leave the existing because it's already been brought up the code, maybe a new roof. I think the air conditioning might have been upgraded. But to take all three buildings down, I'm not in favor. I would, I would try to at least save the church building. Because I know, I know we spent millions on it to convert it.
It wasn't millions. It was probably about a half a million now.
Okay. I know, I know a lot of work.
That included the cost to renovate it into a temporary library space while this municipal campus was being built.
Okay.
And the intent was always to convert that building into another gymnasium. But after living in the gymnasium building space and having it be too small, and then this building be very similar in size, we knew that the purpose for this study was to determine, is it worth investing that additional money into making that into another gymnasium space? Or are we going to be faced with the same problems in this building after spending another several hundred thousand or more into that? And we did replace one of the air conditioning units in that building, but not the other. And it still has an oil burner for. Yeah, the heating has never been upgraded in that.
Right.
Either building.
I was just saying, I know money was spent, you know, just to tear it down. And again, I live a block away, and I never saw a survey. I don't know where they were handed out or posted, but being a block away, I never got one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the architects? Very great.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. You guys want to stick around for the rest of the agenda? Exciting recycling report in a few minutes. All right, folks. The board is now open to comments or questions from the public. Board draws particular attention. Those items listed on the agenda this evening, please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. And if you do like to make a public comment, restart with your name and address. That's the microphone.
Hello, Riley McConnell, 8003 Southampton Avenue. I just wanted to first ask with a, start with a question. The vote tonight on the public hearing for 1103 Willow Grove Avenue, could the board just please clarify, if they were to vote against having such public hearing, would that also be implying that any proceedings towards rezoning the site or allowing a rezoning would also stop? Or would there still be a pathway for that to happen without a public hearing?
Well, I think that would indicate that we're not, if we're not scheduling a meeting to discuss the zoning change, then that would have been the next step to discuss the zoning change. So that would imply that at this time, we're not even considering it. So the applicant could make another request to open that up and have more meetings, certainly. But the, what we're considering today, the action is to actually schedule that meeting. It doesn't lock us at any particular vote one way or the other on the actual.
On the actual zoning, whether or not there's a meeting, it doesn't, it could come back up. I'm, I'm sorry, sir, what was that?
I think, I'm not positive, but I think our ordinance also says that if you don't get a hearing, if you make an application for rezoning and you don't get a hearing, you may not reapply for a year.
It's one year.
So we're not abstaining on that, but we can confirm that.
Okay. All right. So as well, could I ask if the, the board does decide to hold a public hearing, and at that public hearing, the public overwhelmingly is not for the rezoning, what would be the tipping point or the criteria for officially influencing or causing the vote to go one way or another on the actual rezoning action?
I don't know that we can really, really speculate on that. I mean, our, our position, and I'll speak for myself, is remaining open to, to hearing the points of view, both from the applicant and from the public. So I can't predetermine what number of people or what we're going to say, and then say, I'm going to vote this way based on that.
Gotcha.
At this point, we're listening.
Okay, just wanted to understand if it's, if it's still a discretionary process, or if there's, you know, some criteria for if at that meeting, certain things happen, certain number of people, that sort of thing.
Criteria, every, every commissioner votes how they want. If anybody wants to add to that, you know, please do.
Man, I think for me, the, the public input is, is very critical. I think I'm also interested in some of the detail involved in the project. You know, the concerns about water pressure are real. I'd like to get answers on that personally. You know, there's, you know, several other questions that I think need to be answered. And, yeah, so I'm skeptical, skeptical of the project, but I'd also like more information personally.
I share that view, and also I'm interested in hearing the perspectives from fire company and firefighters who, I didn't get that piece of information the other week, so I'd also be interested just to hear their perspective.
Yeah, and to echo that point, I understand the firefighters or the fire company, the host company has, you know, they've undergone evaluation, but what is that evaluation? What other options did they pursue? What, you know, why is this not feasible? And so I feel like I need to know more of that information. And I think a public hearing is the best way to do that.
And would it also include some kind of A/B comparison between just keeping it single-family homes, keeping it resby, and why that couldn't be like, what, what reasons? Or would you be looking for what reasons that it has to be rezoned other than just continuity of the project?
Without giving a specific answer, that, that's certainly something to consider. And what, one of the conditions that the planning commission had asked for as part of their recommendation for the zoning change was that, that the applicant would conduct their own meeting with the neighbors prior to this board that, you know, with our scheduled meeting. And it's my understanding the applicant has agreed to do that and has agreed to reach out, uh, to do that. So some of it, what may come organically out of that conversation is important to note too.
Okay.
But any, I think you're going to, you're going to understand, anytime there is a introduction of something that's a lot more density than what is there now, I think is, you know, obviously, uh, will get people really interested and is worthy of, of critique and discussion for sure.
Okay. And that was, uh, also getting to my later question or another question I had. Um, I understand that being one of those neighbors that I would presume we would be part of that meeting. Um, how does that actually happen? A lot of the other neighbors, I think we've been wondering, will we be contacted? Will there be a meeting here? What, uh, what, when the, the board made that recommendation? How did they prescribe that should actually occur?
Mike, you want to answer that sort of nuts and bolts?
Yeah, uh, I actually spoke with the attorney that's representing the applicant today.
Mr. Cool.
Schools, and he intends to send a, a notice out to all the property owners within 500 feet of the property, which is the protocol we follow for the notification for zoning hearing board and planning commission meetings. And then beyond that, it's sort of up to the neighbors to get the word out and, and, you know, whisper down the lane to people. Um, they'll also, uh, when, if, if the public hearing occurs, there will be a similar notice that goes out as well as posting within the neighborhood for the public hearing.
Okay. And so to be clear, the, the neighbors who are invited by notice are able to have other adjacent immediate neighbors, other interested parties be there. It's not a, um, that.
I would think so. I mean, this is not our meeting, right? So this is them just inviting neighbors. So.
I, I've assumed it's prescribed by the board, so I assume that they would be, you know, you would kind of be laying the ground rules for.
Yeah, I would, I would be disappointed to hear that they would.
Bar anybody that's interested in the community. All right. Thank you very much.
Just saying, you know, though, someone who wanted to speak could be cross-examined to make sure they don't live in aisle.
But I would hope so. That, yeah, that's, that, that's a very legitimate concern. You don't want to pack it with a bunch of people who aren't.
And as for the venue, I don't, I don't know this for a fact, but I would presume that it may be at the Firehouse property just for convenience for the neighborhood because it's.
Makes sense.
More centrally located.
I think that would also be an opportunity to see the conditions of the Firehouse. I mean, I haven't been in there in 10 years, so.
Let's be clear, we're talking about two.
Yes, this is the, this is the meeting before.
Yeah. Firehouse is just a, you know, a wonderful meeting with no rules.
That's just for them to collect information, give feedback, so on. Okay.
The meeting here is with some.
Gotcha.
I, and I know I plan to attend the community meeting. I think Commissioner Ratzavong was going to attend that, and I would say anybody's welcome. But, um, just also to hear the feedback from the community.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you're, you're the wards for, for those two areas, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, I don't, I don't have any further questions. I, I appreciate that, um, just for what it's worth. Um, as a resident, next door neighbor, I would vote or I would encourage you uh, to vote against having the public hearing and to stop this at the, uh, where it stands. But, um, I appreciate you all hearing me out, answering my questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, great. Thank you. We will now go into our committee reports. Uh-oh, I want to hear somewhere, right? No, I don't. I have no report this evening, so we'll go to the chairman of the community development committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, um, three motions tonight. First, regarding the planning commission, I move that the board of commissioners appoint Angela Murray and David Sands to new four-year terms of service as members of the Springfield Township Planning Commission. The new terms of service shall expire February the 16th, 2020, 29. As an aside, both members, uh, both of these individuals have been, uh, uh, highly contributive to the, uh, to the board, and, uh, I would recommend their, their reappointment. That is my motion.
Great. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
My second, uh, motion is the, regarding the building code official. The Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act requires all municipalities to designate a building code officer to manage and administer all building code enforcement activities. The township's current building code official is Chuck Bailey, who will be retiring May, in May of 2025. Therefore, I move that the board of commissioners appoint Mark Penacal, planning and zoning director, and Craig Lloyd, assistant manager slash financial director, as the designated building code officials for Springfield Township. And that is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
My third motion is regarding public hearing zoning map amendment 1103 Willow Grove Avenue. I move the board of commissioners authorize the advertisement of a public hearing and possible enactment of an ordinance to amend the zoning code map by rezoning the parcel of land commonly referred to as 1103 Willow Grove Avenue, Winmore, and more specifically described as Montgomery County Parcel Number and Springfield Township Tax Map Block 35, Unit 20, from B Residential to B1 Business. The public hearing shall be advertised to occur on Wednesday, May 12th.
March.
Uh, sorry, March 12th, 2025, following the regular business meeting of the board of commissioners. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a question. Uh, the way the language read, it said, we're considering, uh, a public hearing and enactment. I, I thought it was just a public hearing. Why, why is the enactment part?
It's possible enactment, and you don't have to do that. It's just advertised so that if you were inclined to do that, you could do that. But you don't have to take action on it that.
We could also table it to the next month in terms of official action.
So for right now, we're just saying, hey, we want to have a public hearing, and that's the topic.
That's the topic with possible enactment, if you should so choose after that meeting. Or you could just table it and end the public hearing.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I have a comment. Um, I had the, I have the advantage of being the liaison to the planning commission. So I have, I have heard testimony on this, uh, this change, uh, numerous times. And every time that I've heard it, uh, I, I come back trying to answer the same question. Where is the public good in this, in, in this, for this change here? And, uh, after listening to, I would guess, at least 30, probably 40 testimonies uh, against the, uh, from neighbors against this proposal, and only one in favor of it. Uh, I, I'm, I strongly recommend, uh, to my fellow commissioners that we do not move forward with the public hearing, and I will not be voting for, uh, the public hearing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Just, I would just add that, um, not to disparage the good work that the planning commission does, uh, because majority of them, I think four of them, who heard the same, same compelling testimony voted, uh, to have it moved forward.
They did. The, the, uh, the hit, but the head of the planning commission did not vote in favor of the, uh, of the issue. And, and, uh, I believe that the majority of the planners saw, saw the plan as, you know, good urban planning with the extension, by the extension of that zoning, uh, district to the end of the block. And that was the predominant reason why they voted in favor of it. That's my opinion.
Uh, well, I would be in favor of, of having a hearing. Um, and I just want to make it clear that in no way is me saying that I would prove this without more information, without more feedback. A lot of the objections from the close neighbors and their concerns about density are completely valid. So I do want to continue to hear more of that. I'm very curious, uh, how that, uh, private meeting goes with their feedback. I am not in favor of increasing density just for the sake of density. Uh, we know there's traffic consequences from that, among other things. Um, but I also don't want to just say no because, um, because it's a quick no. So we're not, a yes vote today is not approving a zoning change. It's, it's just listening to more. So for that reason, I'll, I'll support the meeting. Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and we have a second. And, um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Please record a five one vote.
And that concludes my reports, Mr. President.
Okay. And that meeting will be March the 12th.
Correct.
And one, it's the one month, well, not a leap year, where all the dates match up. So.
Uh, the applicant will advertise, well, we, I guess we'll know when the, the community meeting is.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that.
Did they indicate that it would be at the beginning of March, that community meeting?
There was that indication for the hearing.
I would, I would hope it's maybe a little sooner than that, kind of written in there, so there's time to sort of follow up with that.
Just so everyone's aware, that'll be on our, the, the hearing will be on the website. The property will be posted. People within 500 feet will get noticed by first-class mail, and it'll be in the news. So four different ways of getting those.
Terms of our March 12th meeting.
Correct. Yeah, not the other.
Yep. Okay.
One question.
Yeah, we can't, we, sorry, we can't take a question during the committee reports, but we will circle back to public comment again.
I conclude.
Oh, thank you, Peter. All right. Um, we will now go to the chairman of administrative fiscal affairs and zoning committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first regarding our bill listing, I move that the board of commissioners approve the January check reconciliation in the amount of $469,668.78. And the February bill listing in the amount of $637,544.26. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Uh, next, regarding resolution number 1661, disposition of municipal records. I move that the board of commissioners adopt resolution number 1661, a resolution authorizing the dis, the disposition of public records in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Manual. And that is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Maybe, maybe just by way of explanation, because we went over this, uh, in our, uh, workshop meeting on Monday, but we do this, what, like, once every year, every other year?
Every year, every other year, correct.
Just to purge sort of extraneous paper that we hold on to for, in some cases, 10, 15 years.
Yeah. The position means destroy.
Right. Um, so, um, yeah, this is just a kind of a, every couple of years to thin the, thin the, the records.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Uh, next, regarding, uh, Springfield Township versus Boucher and James Incorporated. I move that the board of commissioners authorize the township solicitor's office.
Hey, hello, Hollywood's Clay.
Um.
I love you, dear Carrie Moore.
Board of commissioners authorize the township solicitor's office to withdraw the.
I love you, dear Carrie Moore.
The Montgomery County. Springfield Township versus Boucher and James, case number 2021-01484. The subject to the township's receipt of fully executed criminal guilty plea agreements or other documentation satisfactory to the township solicitor, which reflects the obligation of David Jones to pay the township a prorated portion of the $100,000 fine paid to the office of the attorney general, and the obligation of Ross Boucher to pay the township the sum of $100,000. And that's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Uh, next, uh, the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board will meet on Monday, February 24th, at seven o'clock, uh, in this building, where they will hear the following application. Uh, this is the application of Mr. Patel, owner of an applicant for the property located at 1339 Bruce Road in Orland. The applicant is seeking a variance um, to allow for the operation of amusement device machines. This, uh, variance is required to operate the gaming machines within the B1 Business District and the minimum 500-foot separation distance from a school, daycare, place of worship, playground, or public open space, that each machine have a minimum of 30 square feet of floor space. That property is owned within the B1 Business District of Ward Three of Springfield Township. And a copy of that application and information submitted for this application is on file at the Community Development Office, uh, of the Township Building. Again, that application will be heard on Monday, February 24th, at seven o'clock at the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board. Um, and regarding that, I move that the board of commissioners authorize the office of the township solicitor to represent the interests of the board at any and all future meetings of the zoning hearing board of the town, Springfield Township to oppose the petition submitted by Mr. Patel, seeking a variance from the Springfield Township zoning code to permit the placement of eight amusement devices within the Orland Market at 1339 Bruce Road in Orland. And that's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will now go to the chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to begin with the recycling report. During the month of January 2025, Springfield Township residents recycled 199.54 tons of material with a household participation rate of 70.4%. The net cost for the month was $16,556.63. Next, it's regarding the retriever pickup service. Montgomery County recently notified municipalities that the Retriever Clothing and Electronic Waste Collection Program has been indefinitely paused by the vendor. Montgomery County residents who are interested in recycling their used clothing, household items, and electronics are encouraged to donate them to the Goodwill Keystone Stores located in Bucks, Chester, and Montgomery Counties. The closest Goodwill stores to Springfield Township are in East Norrington and Montgomeryville. You can visit www.yourgoodwill.org. That's Y O U R for a list of items that are readily accepted at no charge. And that is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner May. We'll now go to the chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Mcnamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item this evening. It's resolution number 1662 regarding the Walnut Avenue pedestrian trail phase two. I move that the board of commissioners adopt resolution number 1662, a resolution authorizing an application to the Monco 2040 Implementation Grant Program for the Walnut Avenue Trail Phase Two. The proposed trail will connect Sandy Brown Park with the P, PZC Preserve to create a 1.15-mile trail spanning Springfield and Upper Dublin Townships.
Yes, I
No, it was me.
Did you see?
It went off.
Did you do something?
I didn't do nothing.
All right, well, there's this particular one here. Okay, try one of your other ones.
I'm getting green.
We're good here.
Finally, we've got this mic on.
It might be that specific mic.
I will accept the motion to adjourn the meeting. The motion is a second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Please record a six zero vote. We are adjourned.